Are we ready?
Yep.
Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation. Councilmember breaks.
Please join me in here, Father, followed by the pledge.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our day of bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trust us against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us to salvation.
(Inaudible). (Inaudible) of the United States of America. To the people of the United States, one nation, under God, in this world, with one reason just.
I don't have any tonight.
The next council business and conference meeting, because we're back to summer months, will be July 13, 2020, 7:00 PM, City Hall, Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. Just make a note, we have something at a special business meeting today, and some of that was from a previous meeting, that finally we have the information for, and we're going to put that on there. But we also have four items today that we will, if we agree, we will transfer over to tonight's special business, because they're time-sensitive and they need to get worked on today. Dear committee, update.
Yeah, I just, actually just got off the phone with Russ Naffew, who kind of headed the committee up, and just wanted to update him on where we're at, like, things that have happened recently, and kind of get a feel of if he was on the same page as I was, because we only had a meeting now in a few weeks. Last meeting we had, everything was just about ready to go, still is, going back and forth with the DEC a little bit on some verbiage and layout of the proposal, the plan that we're putting together. My request of him, and of the committee, is that once everything is put together, that before they make their presentation to us, which is their intentions, and obviously right now, we can't have them in here to make that presentation, so as soon as they can make a presentation, they will be here to make that presentation, but I wanted before it happens, that we all receive a copy of the draft, so we can look through it, you can get an idea of the angle that we're taking, and the process that we're looking at to solve the problem, and then you can come up with questions, and concerns, and whatever, before they make the presentation, so the night of, you guys are equipped with all the questions that you have, so we can address them at that time, and keep things moving forward, because we are under some time restraints, okay? Not to take any wind out of their sails, but the process that we are looking at is starting this whole thing, the beginning of hunting season, okay? In order for us to do some things that we need to do paperwork-wise for the DEC, we have an August 1 deadline, to apply to the DEC for the things that we need to apply for. So Russ's concern tonight was, with all this delay because of the COVID, and right now, all they literally are doing is kind of crossing Ts and dotting Is. Everything else is in place, the bulk of it is all in place, it's just maybe moving this here and moving that there within the document, that's all. So kind of just some housekeeping of the document, if you will. So as soon as we can get them in, the better, so they can make their presentation to us, and we can finalize it, approve it, and then they can go ahead and apply to the DEC, and away we go, come first day of hunting season. So that's where we're at. The good news is, it's just about ready to go. They should have a copy of that in our hand, very, very shortly, so we can really take some time to look at it, and as soon as we can get them in front of us, at least a couple of them to make that presentation, that's where we're going to be at. So just want to let you know, everything's a go. I told Russ, nothing is going to change, we're coming out of the gate now from the COVID thing, and as soon as we can get them here, we'll get them here, because they're anxious to make a presentation, they're very, very proud of it, as they should be, did a lot of hard work, like I told you before, tremendous committee, and a great plan that they're going to come up with to help solve this problem, so that's what we're thinking.
Well, I guess the earliest we would have to get them in is July, we can't do that then, and the August date is beyond us.
Right, and so I assured him that if need be, if for some reason we get under the gun, and we don't have another meeting coming up, then we'll probably have to call some kind of a special meeting to approve it, and get it.
Yeah, if we could, you know, tentatively plan for the July meeting, and even if they come to make a presentation or something, but the sooner we can get that, the better.
Right, and they're working on it right now, just finalizing it. Like I said, the DEC had come back with some recommendations of, like I say, some change of verbiage, and, you know, various different places that this should be moved into the document, you know, that kind of a thing. Whether we do that or not is up to us, it's not required by the DEC, but they were recommendations. So we're looking at those recommendations, saying, are they good recommendations or not? Do we need to put them in or not? Do we need to make that alteration or not? And that's where we're at, just the final draft of it, basically.
All right, so we're kind of, let's kind of assume, kind of get them in mind for just target it for the July meeting, and if we can't, then we got to worry about something else.
Right, and that's why I'm up.
It gives us a month from now to get things in order, I guess.
Because Rachel had contacted me regarding tonight's meeting, and she wasn't sure if I wanted it scheduled for tonight, and I said, no, absolutely not. First of all, I want her to get up to speed on things.
Right.
And secondly, I want to make sure that they're able to come to it personally.
Right. You think that's doable, Rachel, by the next July meeting?
Yeah, I haven't honestly looked at the documents yet.
No, nobody, I don't think, I haven't seen.
I've seen it in a file. I know there was a lot of red lines DEC did, but I don't think it changed the substance of it, I think it was, again, back to wording, so I think there just needs to be a lot of transaction of documents in a very short time, and including our legal attorney and our police chief to review this, and make sure we're all set and all on board on where this plan will be going, for your consideration.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of discussion, if we can get it ahead of time, we can do the discussion on the 14th, on the 15th, whenever that meeting is.
That was my point, is I wanted you to be, I want council to be ready to fire away at the questions.
Right, because otherwise you're delaying another whole month.
Exactly.
All right, that's good. Any questions on that? Okay. The Route 98 Oak Street manholes, Jeremy?
Yes, a while back at one of our meetings, we had some residents from Oak Street complaining about the truck traffic noise, et cetera. I was driving around there, just happened to notice that when that road was reconstructed by the state, a lot of the manholes are much lower, below grade, and I think it's causing, or at least adding to, some of the noise and disturbance they're hearing when the trucks hit these things, really causes a racket between the back doors rattling, and whatever load they're carrying and that. I reached out to Matt Worth and asked him about this as well, and I was wondering, Matt, if you might be able to just kind of repeat some of those repairs that you mentioned that were coming up to help fix that?
Sure, again, as council member Cross indicated, in February, this was brought to the attention, we responded at the council at that time, the intent was to partner with New York State DOT, either local repair or maintenance shop on East Main, and they would provide maintenance protection and traffic, the traffic control aspect of it, while we did the replacement of the manhole castings. The manhole castings are just worn, and on top of that, they're really in the driving lane now, in the wheel lane, which is adding to the wear and tear on the manhole, as well as the council member Cross said, it's certainly contributing to the sound, that, you know, every truck that was over, it seems like clunk, clunk, times 100 with the manholes. So since then, we have reached out to DOT to confirm their availability, their willingness to still be a partner, and they have, you know, absolutely said they're looking to do it. We're tentatively scheduled for August, right now, that's when they seem to have an available spot in their schedule, lines up with some of the work that we're doing, and the point right now is trying to order materials, have that in place, so we're ready to go. The one method we want to use to reset those manhole castings, actually we're not resetting existing, we're going to put new manhole castings in, is some material that is not a standard for New York State DOT, so that's being reviewed, or we want to get that to Rochester to be reviewed, so they can approve our repair method, so all those things will be in place, so that when we're ready to go in August, there's about 10 manholes that we intend to be replacing, resetting, so that they're right flush, and then DOT will come in, pave them in, in that area, and hopefully they're nice and smooth, with brand-new manhole castings that fit tight, and the rattles go away, and the noise goes away, or is, you know, significantly diminished and improved. But right now, the schedule is tentatively August.
Okay. Any else, Jeremy?
Thank you, Matt.
The Councilman Christian, you wanted to make a comment about some ward thing you have going on?
Yes, I wrote two letters of the sixth ward, through the whole sixth ward, and we found 15 violations, we found tires in the backyards, tires on the side of their houses, debris, we found nothing, no furniture, but furniture, garbage on porches, we found a house that has broken windows in the front, plus hog grass, we found hog grass at another location, and for 15 different locations, that's pretty good for the sixth ward, and I turned it over to the inspection department, and we'll follow up on it to make sure that this was taken care of. Thank you.
Outdoor dining on city property?
Yep, so I just wanted to update council tonight, and take your temperature on moving forward with the potential for outdoor dining expansion of restaurants that do not have their own capacity to expand on their own property. When Governor Cuomo and Empire State Development issued the Phase 2 reopening guidelines to reopen restaurants, they were allowed to begin outdoor dining. Many restaurants in Batavia took advantage of this and expanded on their own properties. However, we do have some restaurants that don't have their own property to expand onto, and they asked if there was anything that could be done on expanding onto municipal property. At the exact same time, they started the Phase 3 reopening, which allows restaurants to now serve inside, you can go eat a meal, but they're still reduced to 50% occupancy. So the same restaurants still are looking for an opportunity to possibly expand their outdoor dining on municipal property. I've had two specifically write a letter, a third interested, it's come up in, there's an Economic Development COVID Recovery Task Force, where we have members from the bid, the BDC, GCEDC, the city, the county, and the Chamber of Commerce, so this was one of the ideas that came up. There is guidance from the state liquor authority of how a municipality can allow this to happen and partner with those restaurants in terms of letting them use our property. I worked with the city attorney to develop an application, if we decide to move forward, that these restaurants could take advantage of. We also worked to develop what council would then see come before them, which would be granting these restaurants a temporary license to operate. In the application, it's similar to an event application, so therefore you have all the indemnities and insurance that they'd have to have, and again, it's coming to you tonight to see if we can move forward, they certainly want to move very quickly, and again, this would be a temporary outdoor dining opportunity on municipal property for restaurants, and I don't know, George, if you have anything to add?
Yeah, part of this is that because it's municipal space, if it's space outside of a particular restaurant that they want to expand into, and it will go onto city property, what we proposed was basically the city council consider creating a license agreement, not a license permit, per se, from an actual ability to use that property through a revocable license, similar to other properties, as back in the comments recently in the fall, where there's, ladies and gentlemen, the South Side, passing a city trail, so it's a revocable license for a limited period of time, revocable at the council and the city's discretion. Because it's city property, you wouldn't necessarily want to grant an event, like a permanent, but you get a temporary license to use the property, consistent with the event application and the state's outdoor dining application. And then there's a corresponding piece of this, which Rachel touched on, which is the state liquor authority license. State liquor authority has provided some flexibility through guidance because of the COVID pandemic shutdown, but basically what they're asking for is the municipalities, if you're going to allow it to expand on municipal property, submit an application covering those properties, and then have it adjoining license certification from the actual restaurant that's going to be expanding to the outdoor municipal space. So that'd be a step in the process as well, but from a document standpoint, we've worked up some documents with city manager and city hall that we feel would be acceptable if council was to move in that direction.
John?
To me, this is an absolute no-brainer. Matter of fact, as I was driving into town one day with my family, I said to my wife, I said, "It's nice to see these restaurateurs getting creative and coming out," and of course, a lot of them are using the city sidewalks to put little cafe tables, and I said, "I hope that the city, we as a city, allow them to continue to do this for a period of time." First of all, it's very nice to add to our atmosphere in the downtown area, but more importantly, for the restaurateur, because their capacity is limited to 50% inside, if they can gain in nice weather, gain some outside access to make up for that, economically for them, it's going to be, it's going to make a big difference, it's a game changer for them, and they're just trying to recover right now from their economic losses, there would be absolutely no reason, if we, if the city is completely legally protected, why would we deny them this access to city property?
Anyone else?
We always want to do whatever we can to support local businesses, too, so I'm on board with Councilmember Caneli, absolutely.
Actually, I was going to agree with the same idea, that if we can let them have a space, I don't see a reason not to let them have it, so that we can have them outside and give them some more room to eat.
Exactly.
Yeah, my only concern would be to make sure that they're not interfering with other businesses, I mean, if, you know, if they take up three parking spaces, and now, you know, but I'm sure we could work that out, you know? So other than that, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
I look at Jackson Square, we're not able to use that fully this year because there's no concerts, so we've got this empty square that is so quaint back there, why not let some of those restaurants that are on the perimeter of that?
Yeah.
Set, it would be so nice in there, it would be very, very comfortable back there.
Yeah, Jeremy?
I mean, if this goes well enough, there's enough interest, I mean, could we possibly expand this to a seasonal thing every year? There's some municipalities I've seen in the north country where, I mean, every year they do this, it's not just for COVID, I mean, they allow any of these businesses to do that at points.
I think the starting point is start here, see how it goes, Jackson Square, obviously, is a prime location that doesn't have traffic going through. Once a business applies, the application will go through fire, police, and DPW for vetting and safety protocols, and make sure the space they'd like to, you know, they'll sketch out their narrative and a sketch plan of where they want to participate, and that will be reviewed before it gets to you for approval.
Yeah, and the only problem I have with doing it seasonal, is now we're giving people city property to make a living off of, and that could be problematic to others that don't have those opportunities. So how do you be fair then? So this is a situation, one step at a time, we have the COVID, it is of reduced capacity, we're trying to get them some, get them back to whole, once they back to whole, then that's a whole nother topic for a whole nother discussion, to do it on a more semi-permanent basis, just for fear of, now they're established there, and now you want to put something else in there, and now, how do you move somebody out of there, and now you're cutting into their business that they're used to for the last three years? So it could be problematic, but I do think, for this situation, for this summer, this is a good idea.
So council is aware, there is one other component that goes with the state liquor authority application, and that's a supervision and control plan to basically address hours of operation, traffic control, pedestrian control, safety, and things of that sort, so that would be a component of it, as Rachel indicated, they would have to be prepared for each location to make sure that there was adequate safety and oversight involved to make sure that the hours were appropriate, that the noise was appropriate, and that those standards were met in the city.
Right, yeah, I totally agree. It's nice to have council at least be aware of what's going on, and look at each case on an individual basis, then we can make a decision on it.
I just think the next step in the process is for our July meeting, George provides us with all the documentation for the first part of the meeting and the application.
If there's an application, I think what Rachel's indicating is, if council's interested in this, the city would anticipate there would be a few applications that come in with the details you need.
Well, I'm saying what the city will require in the application.
We've already, we've worked that out.
Okay, so we'll just provide it to the next meeting?
Yeah, so if you, anybody applies in the next meeting?
The only other question I have, George, is, is the liquor authority requiring the area to be fenced in or secured?
There is basic safety and security, yes, not necessarily fencing, per se, but they just want to make sure that there's no traffic, pedestrian interactions, things of that sort.
I know in a lot of areas, they require a fence around, like, you know, so, young people can't, people underage can't just sit down and have a beer and go unnoticed, so...
Well, no, and obviously, the state liquor authority requirements still apply to that license premises, so they're responsible for that, and I would say, as members of council have seen the media accounts, some of those establishments are getting cracked down on, so it's not, it's not a free pass by any stretch of imagination, whether it's the state liquor authority requirements for service of minors, or state Department of Health standards with respect to the COVID situation, they still have to comply with all the existing state requirements in that regard, just another avenue. A lot of municipalities are doing this with respect to street closures, sections of Main Street, things of that sort, at this point, we don't really anticipate that in the city of Batavia, but there may be some areas that the council would be interested in.
And you also have the open container ordinance on the city books, that would obviously, they'd be relieved from if they made the proper application process and were licensed to be there, then that would eliminate that open container violation right there. All right, any other questions on that? So hopefully, if we get any applications, you'll bring them at the next meeting, right?
I like Jeremy's idea, and I think maybe if they're not infringing on anyone else in the following years, they can have a permit process over here, that'll give us extra money for the city, it's something to think about, but it's a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, one step at a time, let's see how this works, and then if they, in the following years, if they wants to come up, let it come up.
To add to Council President's point, it gets to be a longer-term situation rather than the COVID pandemic, you're talking about potentially letting public property use for private purposes, for revenue, so there may be a need to go through an appraisal process and a small lease arrangement put in place.
Right.
That's something council may wish.
So it'd be a lot more than just a license, it would have to be a little more defined, and then we'd be tying up that space, and it couldn't be developed for other things, and if it was a third of a parking lot, that could be a big space, you know? So, again, it's a thought, but at this point, let's worry about the COVID response first, and let's get them back on their feet, and then from there, we can talk about it and see how it goes, will it be more of a trial kind of thing?
I'll just ask one procedural question. In this regard, our next meeting is a business meeting.
It's a special in both, because we do two on the same day in the summertime.
Okay, so I didn't know if we had applications in advance, if we did call a special conference, if anyone would be willing?
Well, I think the plan next month would be a business slash conference, and then the next meeting would be a business slash conference, we can just reverse the conference and do it first, and then move it to that business meeting that night, if it was that time-sensitive. We have the flexibility, but I think in July and August, our normal procedure is to have a business and a conference the same night, because we're on pretty much summer mode, and there's really not much really going on, other than that. But we can do it any way you want, we'll figure it out, we'll get it done.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on that, while we have a moment? Okay, the sewer rehabilitation project.
Yep, you've got a memo in your packet from Matt Worth about the Franklin Street Sewer Project, that was originally scheduled to be a complete sewer line replacement. After they completed a detailed inspection, they realized that they wouldn't need to re-line everything, and that they're going to be, have significant cost savings. The original budget for the project was a little over a million dollars, and they realized that the cost will be significantly lowered with the addition of the Richmond Avenue lining, so they're adding to the project as well, and at that point, the DPW advertised for bids on June 11, 2020, they are scheduling the bid opening for July 2, 2020, and the recommendation will come before you on July 13, of who wins that bid award, and I'll pass it to Matt Worth to give any more specific on the project.
This was a project that was originally scheduled for about two years ago, and due to a very few different reasons, it's just happening now, but again, it's a dead-end street, if you did a complete sewer replacement, or if you had two businesses down at the end, both of them are, we were able to do a video inspection and determine we can do a much less invasive project, and it will follow up with a mill and pave of the pavement when it's complete, so there'll be new surface on the road, and then it is also anticipated that our annual sidewalk project will come through and make it ADA compliant as well from the sidewalk aspect of it, but it is primarily a sewer project.
Any questions for them on that?
Matt, you're saying that when you do this, you're going to mill and resurface?
Franklin.
Just Franklin?
Yes.
Okay, that's just to make sure.
And Richmond is getting the hole?
Right. Just to, yeah, I got two projects here that I wanted to get confused, we are relining the sewer on Richmond, so that that is in place and done ahead of the major rehabilitation a couple of years out. So we try to do that anytime we do a reconstruction or a major improvement, we try to take care of the utilities and improve those ahead of time, so hopefully we're not digging a hole in our new road, right?
So Richmond is just going to, I mean, we've already repaired it this season, and so we'll just continue to repair it.
So this is just the lining of the sewer for right now, in anticipation ahead of the major work in 2022? Correct.
Any other questions? Youth Bureau Revenue Agreement.
Yep, so in the 2021 budget, and for many years past, the city budgets approximately $16,000 in revenue from Genesee County for delivery of our city youth services. We applied again this year to Genesee County for the youth development program funding to support the Liberty Center for Youth and the summer recreation program for the 2020 funding year. We were awarded the $16,000 of funding, subject to availability of state aid, I will add, and we're asking council tonight to move this to the special business meeting agenda for execution by the council president.
Any questions? Now, first of all, I probably should ask you, the sewer rehabilitation project, are we in consensus to move that to our next business meeting? Not this one tonight, it's not that time-sensitive, it'll be at the next meeting, in the July meeting, so we're in consensus to move that?
Yes.
Okay, now, back to the youth revenue, so are we in line to transfer that agreement to tonight's business special?
Did we get the $16,000 from the state, or, yes, we did?
Thank you, God bless. Genesee County Youth Board made their allocation recommendations to the county legislature back in March, they were approved, and the $16,000 was approved from the city. Thank you.
So this is the formality, so that we can officially accept that money and put it towards the proper process, or the purpose. Okay, so we're in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting, that gets moved over. Budget transfers, 2019 and 2020.
Yep, so at the end of every fiscal year, you see a resolution asking you to approve budget transfers. I'll go through some of the highlights, the clerk treasures budget was over by $17,000 for very good reason, they contracted with Three Plus One, an investment firm this year, who brought in at least $29,000 in the general fund, probably another $35,000 on our reserve accounts with their investments and interest, so that's why that account is over. A couple other things to note, the police overtime, typically, from what I understand, talking to the police chief and Lisa Neary, our deputy director of finance, is that the police regular line item for salaries would cover this, and you don't normally see it in the transfers, but because this year we had an SRL that was added, and also two positions were overlapping while we were trying to fill them to keep the police whole, there wasn't room to move the overtime numbers into that budget line item, so you're seeing them here. Furthermore, you're going to see the health insurance fund was over this year, we had a number of high-dollar claims, including two that reached our stop-loss insurance, which is $150,000, so we are asking you to look at using reserves, fund balance, and a combination of transfers from sewer, water, and the mall fund to cover that. Now, it will leave us with $108,634 in the health fund reserve, so I just want everyone to be aware of that, that we are certainly going to work to build that reserve back up. In previous years, from my understanding, the health fund has done very, very well, this was just a big year for it, and this is being asked to move to the special business tonight as well.
And this is, as we talked about earlier, this is standard, around this time of year is when we finalize and clean everything up and finalize the end.
Yep, right before the audit, and we move into the audit discussion next, so...
Right, and, yeah, and the audit, we'll relook at all this all over again, anyway, so, so are we in consensus to move, any questions on this, first of all? So are we in consensus to move all these, this resolution for the amendments over to tonight's special business? Okay, that gets moved over. And the Audit Committee?
Yep, so Lisa-
Yep, so Lisa, Deputy Director of Finance, has issued a memo regarding the appointees to the Audit Committee. If you'll remember, at the last meeting, you discussed having council members Byakowski and Councilmember Karas as the two representatives from council. We also have citizens who have served on the committee for many years that are still interested in serving, Nicholas Harris, Mark Staley, and David Leone, who would also like to participate again this year. Typically, it's my understanding that the Audit Committee meets once the audit's done, in July, August, to go through the end-of-year financials and the audit. So tonight, we're looking for you to appoint these members to the Audit Committee.
So again, the civilians that are on this committee, non-council members, they all live in the city and they have financial background, right?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
They were all checked out by our subcommittee to make sure. Okay, anyone else have any questions or concerns? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that over to tonight's business?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved over. K-9 Committed Fund Balance.
The last item tonight on your conference agenda is the K-9 program donations, which we'd like to make sure that we keep those donations from residents to support the K-9 program into a committed fund balance, so they can't be used for other purposes. So by authorizing this resolution this evening, we can do so.
And the amount is proper $11,228 in donations that were specifically donated to be used towards that purpose, so now by putting them in their own line item, they'll be locked in for that purpose and that purpose only, as intended by the people that made the donations. Okay, so, but right, because if we don't, then they're in the general fund, and how do you keep track of that? Right, so that's our, any questions or concerns on that?
I have two things I want to bring up before we adjourn, though, that just...
Oh, so you don't have anything on that?
No.
Okay, yeah, I'll give you a moment. Any, any reference or discussion on the K-9 movement of the donation for the K-9 into the proper line item so they can be used as its intended purpose? Well, it's, it's an efficient business way of doing it, so we have to do it the right way, so. Okay, Bob?
Okay, two calls today with concerns. Number one was the party, or festival that was at the YWCA, and it was someone that lives in that neighborhood, I think they spoke with you, John, also. And it was about very loud music and no, people parking in the no parking zone, even to include a city vehicle. So I think next event that's there, we just need to consider that. And the other thing, this is a huge safety deal. Another person called me today about it, and I personally observed it. Chief, this affects your department, and it's this parade, parades are having motorcades for the schools, and one of the things that occurred, I mean, it's not, it's not a parade. A parade normally can't go any faster than the person walking in the parade, but the motorcades, young people are riding in the back of pickups, standing up in vehicles, like jeeps without the tops on and all that. And the other day, there was one, and it came down Union, made the corner on the Main Street, and of course, had a police escort and everything. But I, I think that has to be restricted, that everyone has to be riding, sitting down. The vehicles were going around the corner because they were all trying to accelerate to catch up, and they were doing approximately 10 to 15 miles an hour. And if you're standing up in the back of a pickup and somebody's doing 10 miles an hour and slams on the brakes, you're going to be...
I got one even better than that. I saw that motorcade, and, and there was a good portion of the teenagers hanging outside the window. I mean, like, I don't know how they were not falling out. I mean, they were beyond three-quarters of the way outside the window, and I get the whole thing they were trying to portray there, but it, it was, they weren't seatbelted in, and they, and they were definitely hanging out the window. Thank God, nothing bad happened, but maybe if they have another one of these, they might want to make sure they have some supervision in each vehicle so that they can keep these kids from hanging outside, because I think they were taking liberties. I don't think that was intended for them to do that, but they got excited and they were hanging out the window, and, and it was a little...
I've seen several pickup trucks, and I know it's, you can't be riding in the back of pickups and without seatbelts and, you know...
Well, you can, but there's a procedure for it. I think they have to have a gate in the back, you have to be seated on the floor. I mean, I don't know, I'd have to look at the VNT law, but...
But many of them, it was very dangerous, there was no doubt about it. So, you know, the suggestion would be either everybody's seated with a seatbelt or shorten the route up so that it's, it parades speed, so. I'm sure you will, Chief, thank you.
I mean, you know, rolling down the windows and waving out the windows is one thing, but they were, they were hanging right the heck outside the window, but...
Under the circumstances, with everything that's going on...
I, I get it. That, that's, that's why I didn't, I mean, I looked at it and I said, "Jeez, I hope they don't get hurt." But I mean, again, I can understand their enthusiasm, and we were all young once, and we probably did things we probably shouldn't have done, and, and that type of thing, like, so, I get it, but we, we are responsible for our safety of our youth, and we want to make sure they live long enough to be, to come back here and do great things, so there's a double edge to that thing.
I want to know what Bob did at 18, 17, 18.
Well, first of all...
He was hanging out of an airplane.
We didn't have seatbelts.
You were doing a heck of a lot more than they were doing.
He was hanging out of an airplane. He, he was hanging out of an airplane, he wasn't hanging out of a car, he was hanging out of an airplane.
He still does that.
I know.
I see it, it goes over my house.
In the mid-sixties, you could drink a beer while you were driving. It just wasn't nice.
Thank God we've learned valuable lessons from all those exact same things, and we don't do that anymore. Is there anything else? Because we'd like to adjourn and get on to the special business. So a motion to adjourn. Mr. Cannelli, seconded by Mr. Veely, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Cannelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jaykowsky?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Okay. Before I forget, I, there's a literature getting passed around from the Juneteenth that's got some historical information on it, if, you know, if we can get it through, and by the end, if I can have that back, I'd like to keep that as a reference. So it's, it's going around, so you'll see that. I now call the special business meeting order, we'll assign the resolutions, 452020, who would like that one? The resolution with the Thailand International for Highway Preventative Maintenance. Mr. Cannelli? That's the one that we had talked about before, we just didn't have a name due to the process, and we can ask about that in a minute. 462020, the Youth Bureau Funding Agreement. Mr. McGinnis? 472020, the Budget Amendments. Mr. Veely? 482020, the Committees and Boards Appointment. Pacino? And 492020, the K-9 Donations. Ms. Briggs? Okay, 452020, Mr. Cannelli, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing agreement with Thailand International for engineering services for the highway preventative maintenance project, which is Harvester in Richmond.
Seconded, Mr. McGinnis? Is there any discussion, or do anyone want to be refreshed on what that is and what we're talking about there? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Cannelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jaykowsky?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 462020, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to execute the 2020 funding agreement between Genesee County and the City of Batavia for reimbursement of funds related to the Youth Bureau programming.
Seconded by, Mr. Veely? Call the, any discussion on that? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jaykowsky?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Cannelli?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 472020, Mr. Veely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to authorize budget limits for 2019, 2020 fiscal year.
Seconded by, Ms. Pacino? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Cannelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jaykowsky?
Yes.
Resolution 482020, Ms. Pacino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to appoint members to various city committees and boards.
Seconded by, Ms. Briggs? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Cannelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?